Of thirty one million. But you spent ninety one million. Why? And who approved that?
Mister Chair, uh, thank you very much. We will not try to justify the infractions. We, we accept that we overstepped our boundaries. I think we, the most important thing is that we have put in place measures to control expenditure, to make sure that we stay within the budget.
You are the CEO, right?
Yes, sir.
This happened in twenty
Twenty three.
Twenty twenty three. This happened in twenty twenty three. And just like Honorable Abana Osayasa said, it's the way that you guys spend money at ECG. Another one, you said cleaning expenses. Two point eight for that. Hotel ex- hotel expenses. Nine point three million was your budget, but you spent twelve point two. Staff full. Hey, did they drive around the world? Budget was two point eight. And you spent three point six million. Three point six million. Communication expenses, ECG. Seven point nine million. Consultancy. Budget was forty million. But you spent fifty eight point six million. All these, you did it on your own without even board approval. Industrial relations. Your budget was two million. But you spent thirteen million. Stakeholders expenses. Your budget was three point one million. And you spent forty nine million. And you want to increase our tariffs. Publicity. Your budget was five point seven. And you spent twenty one point eight million. Professional fees. And subscription. You are supposed to spend seven hundred and thirty one thousand CDs. And you spent one point five million. Overseas travel expenses. You are supposed to spend fourteen million. And you spent twenty nine point eight million. Call center expenses. You are supposed to spend twenty three point five million. You spent twenty nine point three million. So budget approval was for hundred and forty four million. You spent three hundred and thirty three million. That's excess of one hundred and eighty nine point two million. Foundation over here is that sanctions are the section ninety six of the Public Financial Management Act two sixteen. Act nine two one should be applied to the officers involved. We are, we also urge management to efficiently monitor and control the company's expenses. Uh, CEO, those man, um, those managers who were involved, I'm reco- I'm recommending that they need to face the Attorney General for prosecution. It's just simple and short. You spend all this and you want to come and increase our tariffs. You owe your thing. Now let's go to the next one. Uh, this is our unremitted withholding tax of seventy point nine million. What has happened to this amount? Uh, by the way, auditors note the about the sending them for pro-
Madam Chairperson. Subsequent to the audit finding, ECG has paid in five instalments, thirty five million nine hundred and thirty four thousand one hundred and thirty one point four nine of the amount uh, not remitted.
Sir, what is the law on withholding of taxes? What is the law? About Ghana Revenue Authority?
I think fourteen days.
Fourteen days?
Yes.
And now we have seventy point nine million. It said, how much have you paid?
Thirty five point nine million.
I think this is another one for Attorney General to deal with you. So clerk and then our auditors, let's make sure they face the Attorney General on that one. Let's move on to the next one, please. Uh, paragraph one fifty eight. Honorable-
Thank you, Chair. So this infraction has to do with underpayments of revenue collected to SO, SOEs and IPPs to the tune of one billion two hundred and ninety two million one hundred and seventy one. So the auditors reviewed the cash waterfall mechanism reports and noted that ECG declared total revenue of eight billion six hundred and thirty seven million, seven hundred and fifty nine, but paid only seven billion three hundred and forty five million five hundred and eighty eight thousand to their various states-owned enterprises and independent power-producing companies, leaving a balance of one billion two hundred and ninety two million one hundred and seventy one on this best. So the auditors on the revised cash waterfall mechanism, uh, model. And they also further recommended that, uh, the head of ECG should be held liable for the remaining balance of one billion two hundred and ninety two. MD, can you tell us, uh, what has happened to this situation? What has happened to the amount? What has happened to the officer in question?
Uh, Madam Chair. I can say that location from the cash waterfall. Um, I can say that from February this year, collected into the collection account and the cash waterfall mechanism committee allocates the funds. The allocation is approved by the Energy Security Committee chaired by the Chief of Staff. And we have paid all the allocations made to each entity. So we have complied fully with the cash waterfall mechanism.
That's the first aspect.
Um, we still carrying that as, as debt, outstanding debt.
To give us ruling because, uh, one-
What hap-
Madam Chair, ECG used it. But we're not saying that withholding it is justified, uh, but ECG used it.
Uh, use it for what? Wasn't, wasn't that supposed to be, uh, shared with the SOEs and IPPs?
Uh, Madam Chair. The power we buy. If ECG were operating hundred percent efficient, no losses, the power we buy is still higher than our revenue. The cost of the power is still higher than our revenue. So I can say that even now that we are complying with a cash waterfall mechanism, we are not able to pay for the full cost of the power.
I can understand that. That you, uh, you are buying ECG higher than you are selling to us. I can understand that. But if you should use, do you just do it on your own or you ask for permission?
Uh, that's exactly why we have decided full compliance with the cash waterfall mechanism. So the decision is not made by ECG whether to pay or not to pay. We are complying.
So, um, respectfully, can you tell us what the one point two nine two billion was spent on? Because you said ECG used it. So can you tell us exactly what the one point two nine two billion was spent on?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, some of them were used to pay our contractors. Some of them were used to pay for liquid fuel, buying liquid fuel for generation, uh, and, and other creditors.
Buying liquid fuel for generation?
Power generation.
But I know Ministry of Finance was also paying for liquid fuel for power generation.
Not always. ECG pays sometimes.
Yes, but Ministry of Finance also paid some contractors. Contractors that were on your procurement plan for the particular year?
Yes, madam.
So then if you have contractors that you had to pay in a particular year and you didn't have funds, you are saying, you are confirming to all and sundry that the contractors you paid were on your procurement plan for the year twenty twenty three. Yet you did not have money. But what does the law say? That you don't spend monies that you don't have. So that if you are supposed to pay contractors, as you claim that they were on your procurement plan for the year twenty twenty three and you did not have money, why did you dip your hand into the cash waterfall mechanism? Other firms in that space and then you used it to pay contractors? Clearly you have flouted the law. So when the auditors came, why did you not show them all the expenditure you had made on the one point two nine billion? Because the auditors are saying that they did not have a view of that. And so we should find out from management.
Uh, madam-
Subsequent to the audits and not when they were, uh, they were there. So auditors, can you confirm whether some were used to, uh, mentioned here?
Yes, Honorable Chair. When you look at the, their response, they indicated what they used the amount for. And they subsequently provided supporting documents to that effect.
Thank you, but, um, it is still a breach. Mister CEO, you agree with me? So that is why I say painfully that looking at all the infractions that you have been cited here for and the quantum of money involved. If we should manage the resources we have efficiently that you have put in place, you can shake your head, it's efficiently. We can adjust and help support the difference in what you buy and how much we pay for. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, um, thank you so much. In terms of the quarterly increment, it is not necessarily quarterly increment. There is always a review based on the, um, even with IMF agreement, a review. So, so it's not like, uh, on a quarterly basis, automatically we have to, uh, increase. So that is what, but I think that with the- No, but I'm, but I think with what you are, the inefficiencies that has been pointed out now, it is something that we have to look at critically and, and try to avoid it. Or as much as possible, we should avoid it. Uh, currently, we, in terms of the ministry, for instance, quarterly or on a monthly basis, the cash waterfall, for instance, the minister always want to ensure that not even a CD is retained by ECG. And I think we should carry on with this. Most of the inefficiencies that we have actually been, uh, been pointed out to us will not be repeated. And when we do it set this way, there will be a quarterly review and we may even see prices going down or tariff going down. As we may. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, uh, Minister. Uh, the next infraction is on paragraph one sixty eight and honorable- Uh, it's on, on paragraph one sixty three. And Honorable Abana Osayasa will take care of that one.
Thank you. Um, there's an under declaration of revenue collected. According to the audit service, you collected revenue of eleven point five nine billion Ghana CDs. And you declared, um, eight point six three seven billion Ghana CDs. There's a difference of two point nine five billion Ghana CDs that you failed to declare. So you see what I'm talking about? CEO, a difference of two point nine five three billion that was not declared, even though that was collected and per regulations, forty seven of the PFM, uh, regulations, um, you have fallen foul of the law by failing to disclose. Please tell us, um, the current status of this undeclared amount of two point nine billion Ghana CDs.
Uh, Madam Chair. We, we have tried to respond to that. And we have corrected, um, that action. Okay, so right now all our collections are transparent. Uh, in fact, uh, Madam Chair, my, all my collections go into an account that is monitored by the CEO of P U R C and Minister for Energy and Green Transition. So there is no way we can hide our collections anymore.
CEO, the under-declared revenue of almost three billion and the under-paid revenue of almost one point three billion, that alone gives us four point three billion Ghana CDs. Four point three billion Ghana CDs. Minister, I pray and hope that moving forward, as you said, the right thing is being done. But that notwithstanding, the two point nine billion, what was it used for? And whatever it was used for, have you shown it to the auditors and have the auditors, um, cleared you of this infraction, the two point nine, almost three billion Ghana CDs that was not paid?
Uh, we have provided evidence to the auditors, uh, what it was used for. Um, most of it is for projects, um, for loss reduction. To replace, um, up to them, we exceeded the procurement plan.
Um, Chairman, for this sitting, I'll need you to rule on this, um, before we move to the next one. Thank you.
Uh, it's a procurement violation. And, uh, even though the auditors did not recommend, um, any sanctions. You're already going to see the Attorney General, so we'll add this one to it. So those officers involved, they will have three cases to deal with the Attorney General on it. Thank you very much, ECG. Uh, the next infraction is on paragraph one sixty eight. And Honorable Gape would take care of that one, please. Uh, it's on part payment of procurement without the written contract agreement. Um, the, those that I'm recommending to me, the Attorney General, it is not the offi- is the officers who were involved at that time of the audit. So they are the ones who are going to meet the Attorney General. Not the current ones sitting out here who haven't done anything wrong.
Thank you very much. Uh, this infraction-
I'm sorry. The CFO. No, those who were there at that time of the audit. Or if they are here, oh, then they'll be part of it. They will see the Attorney General. You see, those who are involved, when the Attorney General writes to them, they, they will go. Don't worry.
Yeah, this infraction referred to, uh, part payment of procurement without written contract agreement. The cost is about seventy five million Ghana CDs. What is the status in regards to this?
Uh, Madam Chair. Uh, the contract has been signed. Uh, it was signed in March of twenty twenty four.
It was signed?
In March of twenty twenty four.
So that, that was after the audit?
The od- that was before the audit, but, uh, the audit was from January twenty twenty three to December twenty twenty three. So at the time, the, there was no contract when the payment was made.
In the first place, why would you even make a payment without even contract? There is no contract.
Public Procurement Act two thousand and three, as six six three, as amended. The recommendation is for us to, uh, sanction you. So ECG, those who are involved signing and paying seventy five million Ghana CDs without a contract, you are going to meet the Attorney General. So, uh, clerk, have it out there. This is four infractions that they are going to meet the Attorney General. Thank you. Let's move to the next one, please. And it's paragraph one seventy five. Honorable Akwesi Kuneudu will take care of that one.
Chairman, thank you very much. Uh, this infraction has to do with, uh, with the argument or the excuse that they are state-owned enterprise converted into a company and therefore not told the auditors per the audit report that we have in front of us. But the auditors disagreed with you and said, once you take tariffs sanctioned by the state as IGF, it becomes state funds and therefore you must be subject to the P P arrangement in terms of procurement. And even with that, your own manual for procurement talks about competitive tendering and selection. To them, you did not go by any of these. And you went ahead and single sourced a procurement service. And they recommend, Chairman, section ninety two because it's a procurement infraction. And therefore, I refer to you to be part of the infractions as so directed to the Auditor General. Attorney General.
So this was a and you didn't go through and that should be applied to the officers involved. Procurement Act stated above in all of these procurement activities. And again, auditors and clerk, you add this one to the issues. They are going to answer to the Attorney General on it. This is a major violation and those involved should face the law. Thank you very much. Uh, the next one is on paragraph one eighty two. And, uh, Honorable Day will take care of it.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this uh, infraction and then the second one, also what we call project legacy costs has to do with Haptel Company providing collection services for ECG. And in the year twenty twenty four, a total amount of ten point, Haptel charged a fee of a hundred and forty eight point nine million Ghana CDs. The issue is twenty twenty three, I'm sorry, uh, Chair. Thanks for the correction. And this uh, the above condition is deemed to have affected a company's ability to independently verify the total revenue collected. Because Haptel deducted the amount upfront before remitting what they have collected. And deducted upfront may affect reporting. Now the auditors made two very significant recommendations. One, that management into a designated bank account before payments of commissions are made to the service provider. Number two, the auditors also recommended that further management was urged to ensure that Haptel Limited sends monthly billings of fees charged on revenue collections before payments are made to the service provider. Now this is to ensure that it provides an audit trail for revenue collections. Uh, my first question is, what is the status of implementation of this recommendation? Then let me just ask the second one, so you put all together. The second one has to do with unjustified. It was realized that ten and one point one million Ghana CDs was deemed to be from some unexplained costs that were recorded on the books of ECG. Now this is what the recommenda- or this is the recommendation of the auditors. ECG and Haptel for provision of match and ten and one thousand forty three Ghana CDs, ninety eight persons in respect of service fees for transactions processed from the first of November twenty twenty- However, management did not put transactions from which the cost was derived. The base for other activities. Disallowance of the purported legacy debt of a hundred and one point one million Ghana CDs. Madam Chair, answer.
Thank you, Mister Chair. What we call commission um, or collecting for the, providing the payment platform for us to collect money. So, um, customers want to buy electricity. Uh, they go, they use their mobile money, um, and they pay us. We are calling commission. Uh, truly, it's not, it's not that Haptel collects the money for us and then we pay a commission or provide a service and we pay- We have, and we have given this to our lawyers. In fact, we just engaged a lawyer to help us to review all our contracts, our major contracts. A mobile money, the Momo fee, uh, that, um, MTN or Stellisal will collect. Um, what those who pay them before they go and pay, uh, it means that we will have to pay additional. But the Payment Services Act, which was passed in twenty eighteen nineteen, that is regulated by, by the Bank of Ghana, um, allows them to deduct the money as source. So we want to reconcile client with the law and we have started that process. In terms of the legacy costs, um, we have engaged, um, Haptel to provide us with the evidence. Uh, we've been working on this for some time. We only received the documents from them, the data from them yesterday. We have not reviewed it yet. Um, and to see that it is, it is accurate. We have not done that yet. Um, uh, Mister Chair, I want to confirm here that we have not paid, have earned this money.
But, I mean, from, okay. Haptel issue is something that I've already referred to the Attorney General. So your lawyers, our auditors over here, when we get to court, they-
Yes, sir.
If the board was involved, they will also be in court to explain why they approved this single source thing. The board should be added to it. When the Attorney General gets it, they will call the board also. So sir, this is out of our hands.
And Mister Chair, I just want to add that um, we have negotiated the rate, the fee that we uh, Haptel charges for us. And to see whether we can have further.
Office, we feel so big that we want to do whatever we want, forget about the law. And then when there's a problem, then we don't, Leplum will take care of that one.
Watching us, you're an issued under the loss reduction program. Thank you.
Uh, Mister Chair, we started implementing the BXE project um, sometime um, in two thousand and seven, thereabout. Um, the meters we installed those days, we needed to keep spares for replacement. So these uh, meters were spares that were kept, so go in and replace them. Uh, over the period, technology has changed. So we moved now to start using prepared meters till two thousand and five, thereabout. So it was a new technology for us, okay? So technology has moved on and we've now, we are now using MMS meters. Uh, and those spares we kept, um, apparently we kept too many of them, so we have not used them. Uh, we have received a report, we commissioned um, uh, an evaluation. We should not use them and we cannot use them.
Mister Chair, um, can you bring Attorney General? Thank you.
So the five point one million Ghana cedis meters that you purchased is obsolete now.
A lot and we installed a lot, the majority of them. These were spares, additional meters. So the value was much more than this, but with yes.
Would there be any cost to the customer?
No, when we replace an existing.
I'll, I wish you could have something. If you could disguise yourself to go to ECG and tell them you need a meter, you will find out whether they are charging them or not charging them. The next infraction is on paragraph one ninety-eight and Honorable Enem will take care.
Two thousand two hundred and uh, some purchase orders realized that ECG made a payment of thirty million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty US dollars to various local suppliers for items which seven nine hundred and eighty-three US dollars. The interesting part of it is that uh, when these items are and it's quite interesting, it's a tall list of local companies. And here the auditors try to do an analysis of how much it would have cost us started to pay to these local contractors. And for some of them, Mister Chair, it's quite interesting that for something that we could have purchased for uh, just six hundred and forty-three thousand US dollars, we purchased from a local supplier for two million, which we could have purchased for one point two hundred and eleven thousand. That going forward, ECG deals directly with these original manufacturers. And the second one is to apply the sanctions per section ninety-two of the Public Procurement Act. Uh, ECG, first I would like to find out uh, what you have done on the first recommendation and two uh, steps you have taken on the second recommendation.
Thank you, Mister Chair. We, most of these things were so sourced. Um, and we have changed from that. Um, we are no, we, we are applying the Public Procurement Act. Uh, we have started competitive procurement. Um, I must say though, that not every manufacturer of the materials and equipment we used is interested in supplying directly to us. Uh, the, the, we have suppliers here who reach out to them and take on the risk of doing business in Ghana. And 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 so not everyone wants, manufacturer wants to supply to us. The cure to that is competitive procurement. Now, when you advertise the opportunity, if the manufacturer is interested, they will participate in the bid. If a supplier wants to be a middleman and is interested, they will also participate in the bid. But at the end of the day, you get the best price. We've advert- advertised some of the opportunities in the newspapers. So it's competitive procurement using the public procurement.
They can see themselves paying the duties and the demurrage for these items when we could have gone there ourselves to purchase. But now we give it to a local contractor who in practice should just deliver to ECG office. But now we pay duty and demurrage on these same items. And can you also tell the committee how much duty was paid for all these items?
Uh, Mister Chair, when you procure items, the price you pay depends on the risk that you are passing on to the supplier or the manufacturer. So is the price is a measure of risk allocation. And when you are importing goods, um, you have the income terms that define how much risk is passed on to the supplier and therefore what the responsibility at the price. So ECG, because we are big and we import a lot of things, we have a shipping department. That is, that is um, is um, is a, is licensed to clear goods. So we, we try to reduce the price by taking on the, some of the responsibilities, okay?
Uh, MD, I want you to stop there. Uh, so we are looking at the risk in ECG procuring directly from the original suppliers as against us uh, procuring from a local uh, manufacturer. But a million four hundred and thirty, and then we now go ahead, we could have gotten six hundred and forty-three thousand. We decide to buy two million, seventy-three thousand, and we still go ahead and pay duties, clear them. And this is still a cost-effective way of procuring items?
Uh, Mister Chair, I, no, I did not justify the price. I, I tried to explain why sometimes we choose to clear the goods ourselves. But the price matter, I dealt with it in terms of competitive procurement.
Thank you, MD. So MD, my last uh, question would be, uh, what have you dealt, how have you dealt with these officers that were involved? Per section ninety-two of the Procurement Act?
Would depend on your guidance, yeah.
Okay, Chair, I think we are in your hands now.
Thank you very much, sir. If you reap of seventeen million US dollars, which could have been used to offset power producers like Bay. Now, the auditor's recommendation, we recommend to management of ECG to deal directly with the original manufacturers, local and foreign, and discuss from splitting procurement orders to local suppliers to safeguard the financial resources of the state. We further recommended that the officers whose actions or inactions cause the infraction should be sanctioned in accordance with section ninety-two. So uh, the offenses relating to procurement. One, any person who contravenes on summary conviction to a fine not exceeding thousand penalty units or a term of imprisonment not exceeding five years or both. Auditors, what is a penalty unit? How much is a penalty unit? I think probably so uh, without, okay, thank you very much. So a thousand penalty unit. Two, the following attempting to enter into a conclusive agreement, whether enforceable or not with any other supplier or contractor, where the prices quoted in their respective tenders proposals or quotations are or would be higher than would have been the case, has there not been con- uh, collusion between the persons concerned? B, directly or indirectly influencing in any manner or attempting to influence in any manner the of the procurement contract. C, altering any procurement document with intent to influence the outcome of a tender process and this includes, but is not limited to, A, forced arithmetic correction or B, insertion of documents such as base security or tax clearance certificate this act. We are working with Auditor General, so the code over here. You see, management response at the time of audit was, management responded that they would consider the recommendations to deal directly with foreign manufacturers. Does it take an auditor to come and tell you that, hey, do it this way? Somebody in your office, go and buy me wachi. You give the person twenty cedis and the person came back and said, I couldn't buy a wachi because it was too expensive. You would sit down and ask the person, hey, how much was a fish? How much was a wole? How much was a egg? Before you give an addition. And Honorable D'Gaff Pato will take that uh, that one.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, MD, this infraction is about a abandoned renovation project that from September twenty-fifth duration, that that project should have been completed, a renovation work at Tema Regional Office, which was awarded some cost, one million four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred, one million, one hundred and fourteen thousand cedis were paid to the contractor. As at the time of the audits, the project has not been completed. And so the auditors recommended that you put expedite action to make sure that this project is completed for you. So I want to know, how far have you done with this? And number two, has the project been completed and put to proper use? Thank you.
Uh, Mister Chair, Ted. The project delayed essentially because uh, they were working while we still needed the office. So it slowed down the work and prices escalated and the contractor couldn't do the work. We have repackaged the, the project and we are about to award it to a contractor to, to complete.
Uh, Chair, if I heard him right, he told the committee that the project has been repackaged and then will be re-awarded to the same contractor or a different contractor. And after repackaging, how much was the cost as at now?
Um, so we had a tender, we, we had a tender among five contractors to do it. So it was not the same contractor that won the, the, the project. But they could not be awarded before um, we came in, the new management came in. And we think that we should go by the Public Procurement Act to now do public um, uh, procurement, competitive procurement, repackage it and and send. So we, we started that process. The estimated cost now is about five point four million Ghana cedis.
Chair, this is something, one point four million now to five point. I, I leave it to you.
Um, yeah, so the original contract was one point four and then uh, they revised it to two point four million. And uh, so it's now it's five point four million. But the work was seventy-five percent complete, completed at that time.
Uh, Mister Chair, when we went in, we realized that some of the work that had been done um, has deteriorated further, the building has deteriorated further. Uh, this was six years ago and you're not using the facility, it deteriorates. So that's, that's the tragedy.
What was the main reason for the contractor not completing it? What was the main reason? Um, or what, what is the real, real reason?
Occasion by, let me say us and also by the contractor. Us because we didn't hand over um, a free building to the contractor. And then prices also escalated, so the contractor couldn't complete. They were at the price, at the current, uh, the done price. So um, it's a combination of factors.
At the time of the contract?
Um, if we were doing that today, we will not do the same thing, we will not do it the same way.
I'm sorry?
Sir, if we are doing that work today.
Everybody out of the building.
So what we've done is to move, right the building ASAP. Um, and we will make provision for the providing term pro.
Let me move to the next infraction, ECG. The, the next infraction is on paragraph two zero nine.
Ten has to do with uh, items purchased not accounted for to the tune of four million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and three Ghana cedis. Chairman, items with to the amount that I mentioned earlier. And these items could not be traced. We are talking these items including vehicles and Samsung tablets, hundred of them to the amount I mentioned. ECG fail but failed to support the payment advice with store receipt advice. So you have the tables below. So what I want to ask is that uh, can you confirm? Because the auditors are saying that we could not ascertain the receipts movement and the usage and could lead to inventory mismanagement. So the question I want to ask is, where are these items? Where are these items? That's my first question. List for the hundred tablets procure.
At the time of the audit, these items were not passed through our store system. But subsequent to that, the items were passed through the store system and necessary documents have been filmed directly to the user units. And that's why we had the challenge. So the materials were delivered to the units or persons that were going to use it.
Uh, let me, ECG, when you, when we respond to uh, infractions like this and the public are hearing, they, they will not take us serious. When we respond to infractions like this, you see, you, you procure items and the item, the items. When you procure, so if the stores have not received it and yet they were not in the hands of the stores, so where were these items at the time the audit was taking place? Where were the items? You see, you gave discussions around this platform. It's not good. When we, nobody will manage your own company like this, nobody, all of us sitting here, nobody will do that. So, so let's, let's at least. So Chairman, that's why the last time Honorable Montaka came here, he said that he wished that those who usually take these actions should be someone, not my friend the MD who has just been appointed and he's here. and he's here answering all the questions, you know. So, so Chairman, I leave it to you, but I'm not impressed about the responses, particularly what the auditors have captured. It's bad. Everybody, we all know procurement. When you procure items, it ends up at the store. Chairman, I leave it to you. But it's unfortunate my friend is on the horse seat. The former MD should have been here.
Have those items been identified now?
Auditors can confirm or otherwise.
Yeah.
Yes, and the list has been provided to the auditors.
Yeah, I need to find out from the auditors if what you are telling us is okay. Auditors, could you confirm please?
Yes, Honorable Chair, so subsequently they provided the SRAs and the distribution list to attest to the fact that these items were received duly.
And Honorable Frankie Abbo will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This borders on non-competitive procurement to the tune of two million Ghana CDs. So I'm sure this one to be added to the list that we sent to the Attorney General. But my worry is that there seem to be some kind of outstanding misunderstanding between ECG and the auditors. ECG, the auditors are saying that ECG, you come under by public procurement authority. ECG is saying that they are, that we know moving forward, we know where we stand. So MD, what is the status now?
Mr. Chair, is compliance with the PPA Act, whether ECG is covered by the Act or not? They support the contention that ECG is not covered, but only to the extent that it's using public funds. People have raised the question. The issue is we've passed that point because the Minister and the Board and Management have all decided that we should use the Public Procurement Act. Unless there's a substantive decision, court decision on the ruling, we will comply with the Act. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So the matter is settled for now. There's a test case in the earlier answer you gave in respect of the abandoned project. You said that you are repackaging the project and award it to a contractor who can do the work. You mentioned that five contractors were invited. So did you use the Public Procurement Act in this particular procurement?
Mr. Chair, the Public Procurement Act allows for restrictive tending. But you need to seek permission, approval to engage in restrictive tending. And we did not. So we ruled that we did not comply. And that's why we have decided to re-tender the work.
What have you done so far in respect of the re-tendering? I just want to test what you said in respect of you complying with the Act. So if the what you're doing now is in compliance with the PPA or the Public Procurement Act, Act sixty-three, then we will know that you're complying. Then that would be, then the case is closed. So what actually are you doing in respect to repackaging this particular contract?
Mr. Chair, that tender was conducted and concluded in October twenty twenty-four. The contract was not signed before we came in and we decided we will not sign it. We've applied to the Public Procurement Authority. They will not give us any approval on anything yet until we receive the commitment authorization from the Finance Minister. We have applied for that through the Ministry of Energy and Green Transition. They have forwarded that application to the Ministry. We are waiting for authorization.
Well done, thank you. So finally, what was the content of the application you're seeking at PPA? Is it a restricted single source or what?
We have a number of.
This particular one? Yeah, I mean just this one, not the rest.
For this particular one, we haven't sent any request to them yet because the ones we sent earlier, they have told us they will not give us any approval until we have the procurement commitment authorization. So we've held on.
So in effect, the abandoned project remains abandoned for now?
For now, today, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
ECG, the recommendation is that sanctions under section ninety-two of the Public Procurement Act two thousand and three, Act sixty-three as amended, should be applied to the officers involved. We also recommended that the management should always adhere to the provisions of the Procurement Act. And management's response was, yeah, we collect money from government, but hey, we are not, we are on our own. I'm adding this one to Attorney General's cases. So clerk, keep add it to it and auditors note, they are going to meet the Attorney General. And all those people who were involved, now when it gets to Attorney General, make sure that you get them. If we've given them jobs before, we will get them. You can create all this mess over here and then ask.
MD, this internally generated manual, the manual you've prepared internally, have you started using it or you haven't started?
ECG's board, now that we've decided to go by the Act, our manual is irrelevant because the only document the Board of the Authority recognizes is the Act. So is the manual is no longer applicable.
So that's it? That's it? That's fine, thank you.
Chairman, I just want to reiterate the point that there is a lot of rot in ECG. And then Managing Director and the Minister, what strategies or measures are you putting in place to curb this gargantuan rot and instilling and corruption at the ECG? This is becoming too much. And the one public interest question. Ghanaians want me to ask you, the ECG boss, some private citizens have written to ECG demanding that the lands and houses of some of the sub-stations being relocated. Your sub-station need to be relocated. And this question, what are you doing to protect those land? And also where is always doomsday in Keta Enclave and Denu area every week?
Because he doesn't like you.
Every day I have to be calling the Minister, there is Keta Enclave and Denu always light up. What is happening?
But Minister, is there confirmation that doomsday is back, cannot cater in other places? Yes. That's quite interesting.
Ministry of Energy and Green Transition is concerned. Keta Denu has some challenges. And one, we have actually considered. It has to do with the network line to those areas. It is on the, I'm not very technical in their case. Even when an issue happens and you go and improve the system with whichever means, the next day, so we have noted it and it's part of our programs or the project that we want to undertake within next year where we are going to doing some remedial works. But the major work will be done within next year.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. Honorable Minister, consistently for about two months now, and you name a neat embarrassed experience, a lot of what you claim you haven't seen, the doomsday. Consistently, every weekend when I go, I sleep in the dark. So Minister, this is something that you should look at. We don't want to do politics with it. This is an issue that needs to be addressed. Just last weekend, over the weekend, I was there. I was there on Friday and usually it happens around ten PM. And then you sleep in the dark till the next day. And it's not just Etewa East constituency. It happens in Fantiakwa South, it happens in Etewa West. So it is not an isolated case. It's quite a number of the constituencies in the Buakua region. And I think you should look at that. We keep calling the Tafol twenty-four hour thing. And so I believe that as we've had the opportunity to meet ECG and the Minister for Energy and Green Transition, we should make our case to you to see how best you can solve this problem. You claim it's something you haven't seen. It is not the doomsday you have seen. And but we think that it is that, whatever you want to describe it, all we want is for you to see how best you can address this for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair, we have noted that all the areas that have those issues, ECG has taken notice. And Honorable Chair, you'd agree with me. I think this one, once you have brought to my attention, just as the other one you brought to my attention and I made sure it was fully resolved, this one too, we'll make sure that we resolve it.
I must state that it is true that the other time we're having some serious challenges with the electricity in our district, Etewa East District Office. And I drew your attention to it and you fixed it for us. So I believe that just as I have drawn your attention to these things in these three or four Ibuakua regions, you go ahead and do it again. A reset is changing everything, but I don't think that is what we are asking for. We are.
Yeah, madam, just to let you know, it's not doomsday, it's doom see see.
Thank you. Thank you very much. ECG MD, so with all the procurement issues that we saw from your end, I need this clarification and for the purposes of, for this committee's report and also for the general public, Haptel and their mobilization office at your end, has it helped?
Thank you, Madam Chair. ECG has moved to cashless and we will not go back. So the concept is a good one and we should all support it. In fact, because of that, most customers today, in the comfort of their bedroom, two AM, you can buy your power, okay? And we are not going back. And we are deepening that, now moving, transforming our operations. We implementing an ERP that, you know, we've been talking about transparency. We are improving that, internal transparency, the work, the way we work, we changing that. And it's because we are in the age of AI. We can use technology to improve how we work and to improve our accountability. So we are, we seriously pursuing that. So we are not going back to the old days.
Thank you for this honesty. And I ask because this is an indigenous Ghanaian IT firm doing excellently well in the market and for you so that we can protect our own. Thank you very much.
You haven't heard, I mean.
No, what the MD has indicated, the concept is good. It is just the process in which they were put on, they were actually enrolled, which wasn't done right. But even with currently, their rates have been negotiated. And I think that if we should follow up with it, it will help us. Thank you.
So we can have something that is good for us, but we can also question the price. Thank you.
The question about moving a transformer, yes.
The land, sorry. So, Mr. Chair, my Director of Operations just confirmed that it has come to our notice, so we will work on it. But let me also say that demand in Ghana is growing and especially in Accra. And we will need land and we need space to reinforce our network to supply every customer. We will need to put our equipment somewhere. So we need to work with the public, we will need a.
Madam, sir, hold on for a minute. There's another question that I missed.
Yeah, a few months ago, containers containing cables were missing or were detected missing from your outfit.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure that report is correct. Not from our outfit. I think the honorable member is referring to the report that the committee set up and not with the ministry. A ministry and we have traced all the containers. And we have also given analogy the last time and I would try to do that again. That if I put two thousand Ghana CDs on my wardrobe and it's only one thousand that is there. But if my wife comes back home and said, oh, I took your money when I was going to the market, then I have found my one thousand that I said was missing. So we couldn't trace the containers and later we set up a committee.
So the. I think this question, currently there's a committee that is ensuring the evacuation of all the identified containers. And I happen to chair that committee. So we are in the process of evacuating the identified containers. The truth is that where the containers were to be located, which the committee reported as, cannot trace it. We, is it Avianso? And it is seen in a different terminal. We can at this point say that you have it missing. It's been found, but initially, when it was reported, they were not being located. But now, because they have to do another audit with the support of the Ghana Port and Harbor Authority. Currently, we've been able to evacuate over a thousand containers and its items. And we are still in the process of evacuating all of them. We are working with the Ministry of Finance, the Ghana Port and Harbor Authority, the National Security and then ECG itself, those that we've identified, we should be able to send them to a location where at the end of the day, we are yet to come out officially, we'll come out and with a report when we are done with evacuation. Thank you.
Please, what measure are you putting in place to ensure that this doesn't reoccur?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Needed and that things arrive at the ports and we will not clear them. Spitting to arrive. We made provision when they arrive, within the fourteen days allowed, we take them out. That's what we're doing now. Every month, we don't have a lot of money, we're cash strapped, but it's cheaper for us to borrow money to clear the goods than leave them at the port. The dammage is much higher than the interest we will pay. Thank you.
In addition, the Ministry have also applied that ECG should only order for items that they need. In the past, we realized that there were over procurement and some of the items that they procured at that point was not needed. So they also didn't see the need to immediately even evacuate them from the port. So now it is need based. You only order for what you need. And with the Ministry of Finance, is it commitment authorization? I think that is also going to help to check the procurement processes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Minister, you and your team are discharged.
Thank you very much.
Now we're calling Boui Power. Ah, Minister, you are not discharged, it's ECG. Okay. Okay, Bui Power, have you taken the oath, please? Okay, Bui Power, could you introduce yourself to the committee, please? We are still live on-
My name is Eric Sam, I'm the Finance Director.
My name is Franklin Nana Adai, Head of Legal.
My name is Victoria Tabika, Head of Internal Audit.
Okay, Bui. Ah, Bui Power would start your infractions on paragraph three, three, two. And Honorable Bauer will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bui Power, your infraction relates to overdue power generation bills. And the amount is frightening, hundred and fifty-three United States dollars. And the auditors noted that you supply power to E C G. And the amount that the E C G is supposed to pay the Bui Power Authority in terms of your receivables. Consistently, every year they reduce the amount of money that they are supposed to pay. And per the agreement, they are required to pay bills to Bui Power, at least. And in twenty twenty, for instance, they paid fifty-seven percent of the invoice amount. They decreased this in twenty twenty-one to thirty-four percent. And then they were so- three of Finance and the Ministry of Energy and Management of E C G to ensure that the payments are made to significantly reduce the long overdue receivables from E C G. Can you walk us through the actions that you've taken with respect to this recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Consistently, we've been engaging the Ministry of Energy, the Ministry of Finance and also the Cash Waterfall Mechanism Team, those responsible for the Cash Waterfall Mechanism. But as has been explained today, sometimes as an organization, you have little control over this. But the good news is that as we speak, Cash Waterfall Collection has improved. Said that this year, we are recording an average of about fifty-one, fifty-three percent. So that is the situation today. So we hope that the economy will be good and we will keep receiving better receipts from E C G. So that's where we are.
They've left the seat, they should have been here to answer this question. I mean, because if you pay the cash water every year, you come down. Meanwhile, you are selling the power. So it's a problem. So for now, for this year, they have paid. What of the arrears? The arrears were seven hundred and twenty-nine point seven U S D. How are you getting that money?
I think somewhere last year, an arrangement was made for the Ministry of Finance to pay for certain projects we undertook. And the idea is that in a later time, it will be offset against each E C G's indebtedness to us. So a little bit has been done, but we still have that large arrears with them.
So far, the projects that you undertook, how much are you paid for? Out of this?
So far, the Ministry of Finance has paid also in relation to some other loan obligations that we are not able to pay because of the reduction from E C G receipts.
Have you brought this to the attention of the auditors?
Yes, the auditors are perfectly aware of the payment that are made on our behalf.
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that.
Chairman, I think that should be all for me. I think there is now a little over three hundred left.
All right, thank you. I bet when E C G was here, you heard what they've been using the money for on our water, cash waterfall. The next infraction is on paragraph three, four, one. And Honorable Shelly Chair will take care of that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This infraction is to do with the B P A school. So the auditors noted that you were not keeping a separate account for your school at your Bui generating site and that all the monies were lumped up in your one account. They recommended that you set up this recommendation.
Yes, so it's been outstanding.
This recommendation.
Yes, so it's been outstanding, but currently it's been-
Yeah, in twenty twenty-five November.
Yes.
Is there a reason why it's delayed to?
They didn't have the opportunity to approve before they exited. So now it is, the next board meeting, it's been-
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to leave it in your hands as to the timelines you would give them to report back to the committee on the progress of this. Thank you.
Thank you. What you said was you were going to get permission from the board?
Yes, previously, yes.
So you haven't opened the account?
That account has not been opened. But the new board, there's a resolution going to the new board to open the account.
What kind of resolution? Now, do you know they have to go to Control and Accountant General? Through Ministry of Finance, they get the account opened? All you guys didn't know that?
Honorable Chair, the bank is saying that they need a board resolution before they can open their account.
It's Controller and-
Thank you, Honorable.
Because you can't just go, the board gives you permission. You still can't set it up. Auditors will get you for it because you have to go through Control and Accountant General. Next one is on, the next infraction is on paragraph three, four, six. Penalty on default of biased credit loan of eight hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five U S dollars. We recommended that management should ensure funds are made available through budget allocation to honor the authority's loan obligations. Management response was management will continue to engage with the Ministry of Finance on this matter to ensure their outstanding loan obligations are settled. What has happened to this?
Loan is being restructured by the Ministry of Finance. And as cash waterfall improves, I mean, we have a budgetary allocation, but with the improvement of cash waterfall, we should be able to pay some of these outstanding loans, pay the newly structured loan.
This was supposed to have been done in May and November of twenty twenty-three. And the loan is being restructured?
No, as of twenty twenty-three, the loan had not been restructured. But it was difficult for Bui Power to pay because cash waterfall inflows wasn't too good for Bui Power. But the current situation is that Ministry of Finance is restructuring the loan. And Bui Power has also made a budgetary provision to pay the loan under the restructured loan.
What do you mean by they are restructuring the loan?
The loan payment was supposed to end in the year twenty twenty-seven. But as of, let's say, middle of this year, there was an outstanding of about five hundred million. Yes, about five hundred million plus, yes. So Exim Bank of China agreed with me the actual amount to be paid. But we have made a projection from the outstanding that we will set aside about thirty million dollars every year to pay. But we are yet to get the actual amount that will be amortized for payment subsequently.
Now, Minister of Finance will have to bring it to Parliament.
Possibly so.
Anyway, that's not your issue. Okay. The next infraction is on paragraph three, fifty-one. And Honorable Ahinkwa will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this is about livelihood enhancement program. The Bui activities affected eight hundred and sixteen people. And then per their appetites, six hundred and sixty have been settled and we're giving some persons remaining that have not been sorted. So the auditors identify this and ask them to do the needful. But my question is, what informed that decision? Six hundred and sixty out of the eight hundred and sixteen have been settled and given all their packages in terms of enhancement. Why the others?
Mr. Chairman, I'll let my Director Legal take that.
Mr. Chairman, this is a process. So it's a livelihood enhancement program. So it's a process that we are rolling out. So that was the first set of people, that's the project affected persons who were catered for. Just quite recently, we have rolled out another package. And we believe that, I mean, with time, we'll be able to cater for all the project affected persons under the LEAP program.
Have you faced some kind of agitations from those that have not been given?
Mr. Chairman, not really. We have a very strong community relations team that continuously interface with this project affected persons so that immediately there are any issues, they are able to bring it to the attention of management for resolution.
But in terms of settlement, they've all been settled.
Mr. Chairman, very, very well too.
That you are doing so that they also have, they are relocating somebody from his comfort zone. No matter how dilapidated the structure he's inhabiting is, he feels comfortable. Once you move that, your action so that they can also be sorted. Okay?
Thank you.
That one fifty-six people who are quiet, don't take them for granted. Because when they've seen other people get their packages and they haven't gotten theirs, I still pray that they will have some patience, but don't take them for granted. Hurry up and give them what they have to get. Yes, madam. Okay, Honorable Minister, we are done with Bui Power. Is Valko Trust Fund around? Any other people?
Valko Trust Fund is here.
Okay, so then they should come then.
Head of Accounts and Finance.
Mohamed Gazera Obaka, Acting Executive Director of Valko Trust Fund.
Unremitted taxes to the tune of hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred. The details have been outlined here. But when the auditors contacted management, the accountant explained that the projects were ongoing and management decided to use the unremitted withholding taxes to support the payment candidate with you. So they recommended that you must make sure that money was paid to G R A and evidence of payment soon accordingly. Have you done that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. A total of eighty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine Ghana cedis has been paid. And there are plans underway by the end of the year, the fund will complete-
Such a payment?
Honorable Chair, per our last verification, they had paid thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight point two-six with a remaining balance of hundred and five thousand and one cedis point seven-four.
Mr. Chief Executive, Mr. Chief Executive indicated that you paid eighty-five thousand, three thousand to pay the money.
We have the receipts here that will be tendered into the auditors for confirmation.
Do you still have the receipt with you now as we speak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Does it mean that you made an earlier payment of thirty-six thousand and after that you did others?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
What prevented you from?
As at the time, that payment was not made. But later July this year, we started making the subsequent payments to make up to this eighty-
So my question is, in the past, the payment was not made, agreed. Now that you have made the effort, why haven't you handed over the receipt to the auditors as demanded?
Mr. Chairman, we're not able to tender it to the auditors before coming to this committee. And with the permission of the committee and Mr. Chairman, we'll do that after this meeting.
Oh, so it means that you don't have it here?
I have the receipts here, but because we are in process of-
Once you have it, give it to them straight away. Do that to confirm that you have paid eighty-five thousand. Mr. Chairman, they are in-
Yeah, you can decide on when you want to pay the unremitted taxes. You have fifteen days. Do you get paid through consolidated funds?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ah, so that's, so those of us who get paid through consolidated funds, we need to wait till December. For you, infraction is on-
Noted, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The next infraction is on paragraph two, A six. And Honorable Shelly Chair will take care of that.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. This is to do with the outstanding staff indebtedness to the tune of fifty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven. When the auditors raised this, and this dates back to twenty twenty-one. And let's just keep in mind that this is a twenty twenty-three report. So what I know is there should have been a way of these employees paying the amounts that they owe the fund within a year. But as of twenty twenty-three, they had not paid. What is alarming is the management's response that you gave. You gave a response that in the case of Josephine Mac Lomote and John Ophorimante, they were awaiting judgment with the National Labor Commission with regards to their redundancy and then deductions will be made from that. Then next is Evans Kankam stealing and forgery of signature. And the fund shall recover the amount. I don't know how we got this, like this was undetected. I don't know what due diligence you did for someone to be forging people's signatures. I would like you to throw more light on this. And finally, Dorothy- And finally, you, Dorothy Etuamensa is also suing you guys for, um, unfair dismissal, so you are unable to recover the fund. With these four people, you've left out Elizabeth Simpson, who is owing you twenty-two thousand. She's indebtedness of over nine thousand Ghana cedis. Can you please tell the committee, the responses that you gave with regards to the four employees, can you give us an update on it? And the two that you didn't respond on, can you inform the committee on what you've done about them? Thank you.
Mister Chairman, thank you very much. Concerning the employees, Josephine McLomote, eh, the amount was withheld when they had benefit. Eh, the amount, the amount was withheld when we were paying the redundancy package. So that one, Josephine McLomote and Ju- Joseph Oforimante, John Oforimante, sorry, amount has been paid. Concerning Mister Boabeng, it was a system error. When they, when he was going on retirement, the amount was withheld from his provident fund, but the amount wasn't captured when they were doing the entries. So upon revisiting his redundancy package payment shadow, we found it out that the amount was withheld. So we have done the rightful deduction.
When you says, and.
Mister Chair, no. So that one to also be tended in evidence for them.
So I asked a question about before his employment. I mean, um, can you throw more light on how we got ourselves into this?
Mister Chair, uh, Evans Kankam was employed by the previous, um, A D. And I think that issue was, um, also committed under the same, uh, leadership. And he was the very person that reported the case to court. I can't really tell the due diligence what, what, that was done within OBI.
Elizabeth Simpson, you didn't comment on her. You're still having given me any response with regards to her twenty-two thousand indebtedness.
Mister Chair, thank you very much. Concerning Elizabeth Simpson, upon the drawing of our attention from the auditors, we wrote to her, confirmed, for her to confirm that what they are saying was true. Upon the feedback we received from her, it means that there has been some conflicting, eh, issues because he, he is indicating that at the time he was going on retirement, he has already settled the amount up. It was true that such provisions wasn't made when they were doing the payment. So we are still going through records to find out that whether it's a system error she paid and it wasn't deducted or whether what she is saying is true. So we are in on it.
This dates back twenty twenty-one. This is a twenty twenty-three auditor's report. We are in twenty twenty-five. So how long, how much longer do you guys need to bring closure to this?
Mister Chair, I can assure the committee that before the, uh, next, uh, before the end of the year, we'll be able to conclude on this.
Honorable Chair.
I. Uh, with regards to the fraud and then the falsification of signatures, those involved, we will made to know that they are, their issue is pending before court. And here the auditors are saying the monies involved should be recouped. So in case they comply and then pay the monies, what will happen to the issues that are before court?
Whatever the case will end.
Okay, Minister. Now finally, you are discharged. And, uh, the fund is also discharged. Thank you very much for appearing before us.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. Um, we thank you.
Honorable Minister, on behalf of the, um, the committee and its members and the secretaries, we are very, very grateful to you for attending upon us. I mean, it's been a long, um, journey with us today. But, um, thank you for sitting through to the end. And we hope that all the commitments that the very, and get, um, value for money and also the efficient utilization of our public finances. So thank you very much, Minister. Members, tomorrow, uh, we have Ministry of Lands and Natural Resources. Under that, you have G I D E C and the Office, Office of the Administrator of Stool Lands and Forestry Commission, Lands Commission and Minerals Commission. We also have Ministry of Food and Agri. Under Ministry of Food and Agri, we have Ghana Cocoa Board, Greens and Legumes Development Board, the Ghana, and the Ghana Irrigation Development Authority. We have Ministry of Finance. Under that, it's S I G A, Minerals Income Investment Fund, N D P C, National Insurance Commission, Venture Capital, National Lottery, Lottery Authority, G I F, Internal Audit Agency, F I C, N F I C, yes. And we also have Ministry of Roads and Highways. Ministry of Transport. Under Ministry of Transport, you have Ghana Airports, Ghana Shipper's Council, Ghana Shipper's Authority, Ghana Maritime Authority, Ghana Civil Aviation Authority, Airport Clinic Ghana, Aviation Social Center, and Ghana Ports and Harbors Authority, sorry, and the P S C Tema Shipyard. We also have the Ministry of Defense. Under that, we have Kofi Anan International Peacekeeping Training. We also have these two, um, boards under Ministry of Transport, which is the Walter Lake Transport Company and Ghana Railway Development Authority. So on this note, we'd like to bring our meeting to an end. And thank you so much, the auditors, the secretaries, and members of the Public Accounts Committee. Thank you. Obviously, the media, without you, people can't see and appreciate what we do. So thank you so much. We are in this with you.